Good afternoon. Today is Tuesday, July 2nd, 2022, 2:00 PM. We're at the Ocean Shores Library and this is a meeting of the Ocean Shores Planning Commission. We'll start with the roll call. Owen Ward here, Ryan Backman. Our president, Eleanor Dorman, John Williams. No, he is excused and Richard Paul, so. Here. So I haven't heard from Ryan. Should we do a motion to excuse him? Give him a few minutes. We'll give him a few minutes. Alright, we will do that. Okay, the first thing we need is a motion to approve the meeting agenda. So, second. All in favor?
I'm. So that was Thorn and Dan.
And Dan, yep. Alrighty, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting held on the 28th of June?
I believe to approve those minutes.
Alright, we need one direction. It's just a small one down at the bottom, adjournment. It's adjournment, Chair Rickert.
Oh.
You can make that adjustment, sir.
Alright, so circuit, will you make, okay.
All in favor?
I'm.
Right, so that was, that was Wills and Dan, second.
Alright, so, public comments. We do not have any written public comments, I believe.
No.
Okay.
Andy had the.
And we have comments from before. Andy?
Yes, I just want to say that the public comment on Friday was good enough to get good answers yesterday at the council meeting and thank you for the answers. They were meticulous and accurate and that will provide good comment for citizen meetings when we discuss issues like this. And this is good for everybody because it provides better city government when you follow the protocol and things are done properly. So I just want to thank you for the results.
John Williams, do you have a public comment?
No, I don't. Thank you very much. I'm listening. Thank you.
I do not believe we have any old business to cover. The only thing I will cover on the old business, as I said before the meeting adjourned, the mayor has asked me that I bring our, our discussion and resolution on food trucks forward for the next city council meeting. And I will prepare that transmitted this afternoon or tomorrow, just as we agreed, very simple, like we passed the motion and agreed to do it. So that'll go out this week to the mayor. Very short meeting today. Two, two issues hopefully won't take very long. The first thing is Planning Commission member discipline verbiage. This has come up based on Dan working to review and update the handbook. I believe that's how it came up. Correct. So I will briefly lead it off, then I'm going to ask Dan to sort of elucidate a little bit more on what we're talking about. Basically, it's when a fellow commissioner has done something or I guess the best way, has done something such to the fact that the commission should consider some sort of discipline to include recommendation of removal from the planning commission. Is that the best summary? So Dan, if you want to sort of elucidate a little bit on what we're talking about.
Well, last fall was a terrible time for some. Richard and I both were taking it heavily from fellow commissioner. And it was not documented well entirely. I took one of the emails, I sent it to the mayor or copied the mayor on it for my response. And it was abusive. And there's, there's no way to get a planning commissioner off if they're abusive. I think there should be. It may never happen again, but there's got to be an out. If the mayor can put somebody on, he'll be able to take them off. But it ought to be documented what the abuse was. I mean, some of these emails were just nasty.
So what I would like to do is some sort of discussion, what we really need to come up with is sort of a process by which we would remove, or if there is any, and I struggled all week to figure out what's a lesser discipline. There really is a point. Really, we're talking removal.
I'm just wondering, and I completely understand what you're saying, and I'm with you, but I wonder if something is sent, which I assume this was, maybe it wasn't, by a private email to another person. I'm not sure you can discipline someone based on a private email on a public committee. I mean, if it was said publicly.
I, I think, I, in my case, I think I have the right to do that. He attacked me as, as the chair of the planning commission. So I have the right to send that on.
I'm not saying you don't have a right to send it on. And when I say you or any person in that, that situation. I'm, I'm just wondering if it's a personal email, if it could be used for discipline in a public meeting.
Well, it was all.
I don't know. I'm asking the question.
Good. It was all about planning commission stuff. So I don't think that's real private myself, but.
Any discussion? Um, Richard, you have.
So, so as Dan indicated, I was also the brunt of some of that vitriol. And in my case, it all happened on telephone conversations. And on these three occasions, that person said, are you intentionally trying to sabotage the planning commission? And I found that really, really upsetting and offensive because I think that we all do a bad job. I know how many hours I put in to try to present. And so, so I agree with, with Dan. I think that some, some form of recourse needs to be codified in our commission handbook. And to that end, I talked to my wife a little bit, who was the department head in the psychology department at a university. And she was also the chair of the Northwest Psychology Association. So she has some background in that kind of thing. And we had a fairly lengthy discussion. And she made me aware of a legal term called ad hominem. And in general, ad hominem is an attack on a person as opposed to a discussion of an opposing viewpoint. And so this is all background to say that my suggestion is, is if any commissioner is feeling personally attacked, that they communicate that to you. And if you happen to be the source of the attack, and I, I'm thinking about military situations where sometimes the commanding officer was the problem, or the commanding, the supervising sergeant was the problem. You know, then the next course would be, the next step would be the mayor. And if that offended a commissioner can give some background, some credible background to you or to John, that then you and John feel is grounds for dismissal. I think that as the mayor, as Dan said, the mayor points us, so the mayor ought to be able to fire us. And the question is, he appoints us with council approval. But would he need council approval to fire a commissioner? And, and I think that, you know, that's, that's a discussion that you can have with John, and John may want to have with the lawyer. But in my, in my mind, that ad hominem attack is, is ample grounds, if it's, if it's kind of a trend, a repeated thing. And we're not talking about, I disagree with your opinion. The thing that I love about this type of an environment is as we discuss opposing opinions, it, it causes more stuff to come out, which makes for a better resolution. But what I'm talking about is a personal attack. It's happened to Dan.
I am most certainly not disagreeing at all. I'm just saying we need to think through or touch base with the attorney to make sure the, the way we write it is enforceable. And that it's not going to come back and bite us.
And I, I totally agree. And I think there's, I'm listening to this discussion. See if one has a dad. There's two different issues. There is the perception of a personal attack during a meeting, which is clear.
Right.
No argument. These are recorded, minutes kept. Then there is discussion of a personal attack upon a commissioner by another commissioner that is not done in the public setting. And that's where we would need some legal guidance or figure out
Exactly.
what we can do with that, correct? And it's a discussion we can have with the city lawyer and in the mayor and city.
Yeah, because every time we, like, people want to add from the volunteer standpoint of the boards, like, that kind of subject, it's all it gets slippery because it's all very subjective. Just because you find it rude or misleading or whatever, that person may say, well, that wasn't my intention. And there, there were you left, like.
And some people get offended at everything.
Yeah, so it's, it's really, uh.
Do any of the boards have anything?
No, nothing than the library board, or excuse me, not library board. The radio board has like a grievance process, but even that has proven ineffective and had to be elevated all the way to city staff to help navigate it. So it's, it's really like a case by case and you're all volunteers. So you can, this mayor or her member can navigate through it in that capacity. But I don't think putting something in your handbook, other than like everyone will treat each other with respect, is really going to get you anywhere.
Okay.
In, in truth, not that you should be subjected to any of that behavior or anything like that. There's so many pieces past that point that have to be evaluated by HR and our administration, the mayor. So far, like, you'd kind of be wasting time putting anything in there other than, you know, be considerable to one another.
Could you leave it open and that we expect respect paid towards each other? And if, if that is deemed disrespectful by the president or the chair, no matter who says it, it may be passed on to the mayor. Just, no.
So.
I think that kind of gives a warning without giving a cloud that we really don't have.
And I think, I'm trying to sort of walk through what you just said. And I've been down this road with EO and other issues. And I know everything that goes into that. So I, I for one think first a discussion about conduct and respect is well wanted. And it's also the thing that we need to talk about and maybe bring it up for a vote next week is do we want to allow the planning commission to, based upon a planning commission members' comments or report, vote to recommend removal to the mayor? We could put that as sort of the, the teeth into it, that any planning commissioner can come to a planning commission and say, I believe this conduct was offensive.
Essentially a vote of no confidence.
Basically a vote of no confidence. What we would have to do then, and I've talked briefly about this, is then do we do simple majority? Super majority or 100% other than the offending party? So those are the three areas we would kind of look at, just to make it not such that.
Takes away the subject to the deal.
That's what it is. So can you, can the planning commission send to the mayor a recommendation for removal on a simple majority? Dan, go ahead.
Well, I think we also have to consider, you know, somebody doesn't. They make an attack, okay. Say this person makes an attack on, on me. And I brought it to the, to the planning commission. In all, in, in the companies I work for, you got a step process.
Yeah.
So you, so you have to give them a warning. And you have to give them a second warning. And every time you're gone. And I think we have to do something like that.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm up for that. And if you, and I'm not sure we have to go quite as far, because this isn't employment.
Yeah.
So we're not subject to all of the employment law in doing this. This is strictly, you know, we volunteered, the mayor appointed, mayor recommended our appointment. We had a consent from the council. So it's a little simpler because nobody's getting paid. It's not that simple.
Yeah, I think we at least need to give one warning because somebody must, might not think there'd be an action to add the interview.
And my experience in doing this in the past is, one option is to say basically the offended commissioner come to the chairperson. The chairperson, come, discuss it one-on-one with the purported offending person as sort of the first step. Then if it continues, then it can come to the entire commission. I mean, that's an option.
I, I like what you just said, that the offended commissioner brings to the chair and the chair can talk to the two parties involved. And perhaps that's enough to defuse it. And then if, if the activity continues, then I like Dan's suggestion that, that it then goes to a consensus vote. And I like consensus over super majority. Because depending on, on the, the factors involved, it's conceivable that not all of the commissioners would perceive the same offense. There was one meeting I can think of in particular where Sarah had relayed, relayed some, some information from the mayor. And then a commissioner got on their soapbox and just took over the meeting and, and refused to relinquish the, 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 what's the right word? They would not shut up. And, and I found that whole, that whole scenario pretty offensive, but not everybody may have. So I'm stumbling on along to say that, that, that I think between what you said and what Dan said, I think that we can, can, can write some guidelines. And as Sarah's indicated, it may not stand up in a court, but we're not employees. It's not going to go to court. And, and it basically comes down to, to if, if you have a consensus of commissioners think that the Schmidt lap should hit the door, and you get the mayor's agreement, then Schmidt lap should hit the door.
And it's, I think that if we want to sort of do that as the end, it sort of ends out a recommendation from the commission to the mayor. Then it's up to the mayor to figure out if he has to go back to council or not and sort of look into all of that. For us, it's again, keeping in our, in our area of influence, it's, we as a majority of the planning commission believe that the behavior of one of our own is such that we recommend removal for the good of the commission.
And I, I like that. And so then my question is, is, is that enough information? Could you write something up based on what we just discussed and present it at the next meeting? Or Gary, you've had, you've had some, some bureaucratic experience in this arena. Would you be willing to kind of draft up what we just discussed and bring it?
Yeah, I could. It's up to you, Dan. I can do a first draft, but you can do a first draft. Alright, you know, like my writing. People for me to write. What I will do though, unless anybody says no, I would like to send it to Dan because he's got more experience with a handbook for a read before it comes back to the commission. Yeah, I just think we've got to keep it simple. I want, I want like three sentences. Yeah.
And if you're going to put chair, make sure that if you have something in there, that if it's about the chair, that you go to the vice chair.
That's a good idea.
Because I'm telling you, it happens. And it's like, well, I went to so-and-so and he didn't do anything about it. So.
So I'll, yeah, let me think about this.
Make it very clear that it's, yes.
And I like what you just said about, about ultimately it goes to the mayor. It's, it's, it's the mayor's decision. The mayor may just say, work it out.
With us, it's, all we can do is recommend. We have very little authority in this, in this group. But I think it's enough to be thought, please.
I missed all the excitement that just occurred. Probably a week before I joined.
No, it was before I joined, so.
Sort of titillating inside.
You know, it's probably never going to happen again.
But I, I mean, so. We heavily on the mayor to, as he can fire us, he can fire us, basically. It's necessary for the council to concur, that's fine. But we heavily on the mayor's ability to say, be.
And based on us. And so I'll, I will put something together next week and send it, Dan and I will pass copy. It's one of my three writers. Any other discussion on this? The next item is something that the mayor talked to me, and I've been doing some research, and this is truly brainstorming stuff among us to talk about the way forward. The mayor called it a livable city initiative, which I've done a bunch of, read a bunch of definitions of what a livable city is. And there, many, most of them are so esoteric, they mean nothing. So I, I think the mayor's looking for a little more focus. And the areas he sort of talked about were briefly he mentioned, you know, biking, walking. And I, Thorn brought in affordable housing, which definitely needs to be in there. So the definition, definition of a livable city, there's tons of them. And I will bring something next week in a document. I just didn't want to do that. Sort of a city that the residents enjoy living in and have the ability to have a good quality of life. Vancouver, British Columbia is always cited as the most livable city in the world. But on a large city, that's bike paths, parks, healthcare and all that sort of stuff. So I think we need to sort of narrow this scope a little bit. But I also think there's some value.
I would like to see us revisit sidewalks, because I'm sure most of you remember the elaborate sidewalk design that nobody liked. And it was going to take up parking spaces. We were going to lose, I don't remember how many parking spaces we were going to lose here. But, you know, when I drive down the road and I, I see the city right away, it seems to me like there should be enough room to just build a sidewalk straight down Point Brown without taking out parking spaces.
Go ahead. I think what we need to do is start with the con plan. Exactly. I was going to go there next. Because we've, we've dressed mostly zim. Right. So my thought was, we use this, and I don't know if we'll keep calling it the livable cities initiative, but it's a good buzzword, to go through the comprehensive plan. And there are dozens of goals and initiatives that would dovetail very nicely in this. Alright, sidewalks over. And sidewalks are back on the city council agenda on how to solve that issue. And again, I see this more of a, starting off as sort of a strategic document like the con plan, but sort of moving it more towards implementation of the comprehensive plan. Picking some things out of the comprehensive plan to put into the initiative. Sidewalks, better marked biking, safer biking, which has now become a big issue in the city with all the e-bikes. Lots of things can come back into this again. So maybe we go through the comprehensive plan and pick a dozen of them. But we're not going to sit there and draw where the sidewalks should go. But we could say things like the planning commission on the livable cities initiative recommends a simplified sidewalk plan for Point Brown. Or something like that, just to sort of give the city staff and the mayor a little sort of nudge in this and not get some other stuff after. Go ahead.
So, so I may be too close to the weeds right now, but, but I have two ideas that I would like to see advanced. And one of them is there's no place to dump yard waste besides Grandin de Montesano. And, and I think that, that it's worth the city exploring a way to handle compostable yard waste and, and branches and limbs that are burnable yard waste. And, and so I don't, again, I don't know if that's too far in the weeds, but the other idea that I have is, is we're finally starting to slowly inch forward on wave-up ditch. And for a couple of years, for about four years, I've known it anyway, for a couple of years, I have thought that that whole wave-up ditch area on the east side of Point Brown, that once they get the ditch cleaned out, that that could be turned into virtually a mile-long park with the break around Arrow Lumber. And it would be like the, was it, is it Austin's River Walk, the, you know, whatever the, a long park with kind of a creek running down the middle of it. It's got some type of water in it and sometimes not. And with, with platters and benches. And it'd be a great place to put a sidewalk. Because there's no impact on traffic. So those are, those are two specific ideas that I would like to advance.
So what I'm going to sort of propose is I will put together some sort of an outline of what areas we're looking at. But I would like planning commissioners to come forward with just those type of ideas that you have, and please tie them to the comprehensive plan goals and objectives.
Right.
Because we need to start using that. And I'm constantly forgetting. I mean, everything I go to the city council with, we should be talking about how this fits with the comprehensive plan. And I'm just not doing that myself. And I think we all need to sort of re-discipline ourselves. Because I just opened it last night again, as I was sitting through a three-hour city council meeting and started reading the comprehensive plan a little bit again.
We put years into that.
I know. So I view this, the mayor asking us to do this to sort of working on operationalizing it. The other thing I would ask you to think about, and this gets to writing the the commission handbook and the public meetings, is I would love to get this in a public involvement, sort of like Jim Hummer's beautification committee at a sub-planning commission level, if that's possible and legal. Jim, the beautification committee isn't a city activity, right?
No.
So if a planning commissioner wanted to lead a public discussion about walking, hiking trails, or whatever you wanted, would that have to be considered a public meeting or is a way to do that outside the public meeting block? I would love to sort of see if there's a way to do working groups or something like that in the planning commission, where somebody could volunteer and then we could get citizens to volunteer to bring ideas to this working group, to then bring them to the planning commission. We have some, having not been here long enough, I don't know if I'm stepping on a grenade by suggesting that, or do you have any thoughts about a way to get public involvement short of public comments at a planning commission meeting?
The only difficulty I see is square to hold it. We hold it in the commission center. There's a significant cost involved. And if it was as large a meeting as you're describing, maybe too big for this room. I don't know what the details are for using the Lions Club. Is that, is there a fee for using the Lions Club, this type of them? There's no fee or you don't know?
No, not that. There's no fee from the last time I know.
I just, I wanted some discussion on, is there a way, because this would be a beautiful way to get the public involved in making the city better and to educate on the comprehensive plan. That's what I'm looking at, two for one on this. And poor Marshall's going to be the end of all of this. Because we're going to come up with these great ideas. The Marshall's just going to be, oh my gosh, how are we going to do any of this?
So you're basically talking then about a, kind of like a town hall meeting to discuss signification?
A, a working group. I just use Jim Hummer's group because it's well-known, the beautification committee.
Why not city chats?
Having a city chat topic.
You have like forty, fifty, sixty people go to those.
Yeah, we could do that.
And that, the only reason I say city chat, and I mean, it wouldn't be for one or two, three months because it's all budget stuff now. But those are for education of the community on a different levels. And the, the thing about that versus like the meetings that you have is that those are after semi, after working hours, where a lot more people in this community are able to go. And that is a, you know, free conversation. People ask questions. You can provide documents. You can provide screen shares. You can do all of that. And it's advertised as such. And then we typically do a overview of the, Marshall was out, one for the planning department. And we did this really beautiful overview of, of his presentation in it. And then it reached even more people. And we did this really beautiful overview of of his presentation in it and then it reached even more people in that capacity.
So I'm, that's that's a a great way to think about getting some public involvement. So. As I, and I'm gonna try, I'll get with the mayor in the next few weeks to discuss sort of what we're doing. But bringing forward. Ideas to the next meeting and I'll sort of do an outline and then if we can sort of. Place them into categories and then make those sort of a city chat topic. So hike, walking and biking can be one and then that will be a bunch of stuff. I really do think in the comprehensive plan, I'll get to you in a hell of a, we've got to address affordable housing. Whether or not that's too big for us to deal with, but there may be simple solutions like those, just maybe you change the scheme. Some simple stuff we can do in the affordable housing that we can recommend to the mayor. So that's sort of all of the things we could bring into the livable cities. And see the livable cities plan as a way to begin to implement the comprehensive plan.
I I just don't think we as a planning commission can do anything about affordable housing. I mean, that's. I I think that's just out of my jurisdiction.
Oh, we could, go ahead, sorry.
I don't recommend we ask the city for any money at all for that. I think that's foolish. So city can make a housing affordable by charging taxpayers for it, but if we can change, so expand some zoning options. Let the people who build houses take care of that issue.
I mean, that it's it's for discussion as one of the things you mentioned is the additional dwelling.
Yeah, we do A D U's right now. They're perfectly legal, but you can only rent it to your cousin. That doesn't make sense.
So there's there's things we could do, but that's a very limited piece. I totally agree. Every time I read that, the comprehensive plan, I scratch my head, oh, what the fuck can we do? So there may be little things we can do. Many cities address healthcare. There's nothing in the planning commission we can do on health. That's way above us. So we want to sort of look at the liv- the livable city initiative as a. Um, as I said, operationalizing the comprehensive plan, coming up with some recommended. Um. Actions to make it sidewalks. I mean, I could go to the, let's make the beach. Approaches accessible year round, whether or not you know it is most of the pedestrian beach access is going underwater for about three or four months. You can't get on the beach unless you're driving on most of them. So little things like that. That benefit the community because there's lots of people that try to want butter clam. And I see these people traipsing through deep water or whatever, little things we could do to help this. I'm sure it is, but I I just think this is another way. To sort of package it and then like you said, bring it to the city chat. Get some public input on it with more ideas and we're tweaking the ideas. You know, my pet peeve is we're gonna have to sit down soon with the chief of police and talk about bicycle safety. Because I've seen way too many near misses on Ocean Shore Boulevard with everybody riding an e-bike now.
The west side of the city has bike paths.
Absolutely.
The east side doesn't.
I agree.
You go down Duck Lake Drive and all the bikes down there, it's dangerous.
Yep.
It's dangerous to even walk on Duck Lake.
Well, I have, there's a lot of people do. So I mean, the solutions having done this before is you 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 put signage for bike paths. Get people on the, on the west side, you get people off of Ocean Shore Boulevard. Onto the two sand dunes and then reduce the speed by in front of my house where there is no sand dune. Little things. Duck Lake Road, you know, basically put a sign if you want this, there's no bicycles. But then here's where the citizens are gonna have input. You direct them to where I ride my bike. I don't ride on Duck Lake. I take all the base front roads. But I gotta get on Duck Lake for three blocks, you know, and get back on again. So if you do signage that says. You know, bike path or bike route one, bike route two, because you're not gonna keep them off of those routes. I mean, I ride at six in the morning, so I don't see many people, but I personally, I don't like riding on Duck Lake Road. I ride Bay Road instead. But the issue is then if you make that designated bike path, then the citizens are gonna have a bike path in their front car. Richard, go ahead.
That's specifically what you're talking about. We talked about in the con plan. And one of the proposals that I'd like to to rejuvenate is that we publish a map that said, these are the alternate bike paths to stay off of Duck Lake. And and my wife and I ride not Duck Lake, but the, you know, the side street, but there's a block or two where there's no choice except Duck Lake.
But you could do more. You can do signage. You can create.
Right.
Bike routes. Many cities create a bike route. You can do that.
Cover the ditches with covers and pave that short stretch together. People from Sunstir, Sunrise or whatever.
And 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 as we do this, I just, we just need to drop the speed limit in that little piece because where's where. Where San Joe comes back onto Ocean Shore Boulevard going south. That stop sign every day because you come around a corner and somebody's, someone's doing fifty instead of the speed limit and there's eleven yellow bikes in the lane. So I'm just waiting for the staff and so speed limits, signage, bats off, but that's just one initiative. That's what I'm talking about, what we're sort of doing, then always tied to comprehensive plan.
I would like to also see us in conjunction with that. Each take a small area of the city and all walk a bike ride because. Remember when we walked downtown for the signage? If you go out with the intention of really looking at the area, it's amazing what you can see. For example, Duck Lake needs a bike path, but there is no room because the ditch is right at the road. But you learn a lot by being assigned a small area to go and investigate. And it's almost all turns out like the signage, right? We were astounded at what we saw.
And that's a, that's something definitely we we can talk about next week and pick areas of the city.
So so a related, but a little bit off subject, and I've said this before, uh, there is a a. A large disparity between the current land use map. And the land use designations in chapter three. Uh, and that's a loop that I think we need to close because the land use map designations are not defined in the comprehensive plan. And 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 there's there's two or three that are kind of defined, uh, and it would not take very much editing. Uh, uh, to tie the kind of loose definitions that are associated maybe with the land use designations. Uh, and and and. Fix chapter three so that when, I I know you don't even remember what the designations on the land use map are anymore without pulling up the map. Uh, but it doesn't matter because, you know, what is the downtown area? What what is the the southern development area? Um, and the the southern development area is not. Identified in my memory, uh, in in chapter three. So anyway, I'd like to see chapter three edited to bring it in alignment with the land use map.
So yeah. So what I'm gonna volunteer is my third writing assignment this week is to sort of put categories together. And then I want people at the next meeting to bring sort of ideas and we'll start talking about. Binning them into the general categories that I will put out there.
Right. So if if you put those categories together, I'm assuming you will email them to each of us so that we can come prepared for the next.
Well, we'll be in the minutes and we'll try. I'm gonna publish this part of the minutes and so that'll give you. I'll get you the minutes earlier this week, so that you'll have a week. We'll try to get the minutes published a week from today. I I mean, the agenda. We'll get the agenda. So the easiest way for me to do it, I can put it out there before the agenda, but it'll be part of the agenda. It'll be an attachment to the agenda. But I can also email it to everybody as soon as I'm done. That's me, that's it.
I I like as much free time as I can get because sometimes I just have to wait and cook in the in the back burner for a day or two before my ideas start to pop up.
But I I think, you know, as I was sitting last night thinking is is we sort of are, have taken on. A lot of the tactical. Right now issues. You know, tents, uh, transit housing, transit, you know, transit lodging, food trucks. I'd really like to see us as a group get a little more back into the strategic. Operationalism, comprehensive plan and then big idea and things. That then the mayor can come back and see, okay, these are things. And again, we won't get it into this budget cycle. Because I'm learning what the budget cycle is. So we're talking next year unless there is some. Things that are in the budget that can sort of be squeezed into these ideals. So based on what the mayor told me, based on um. You know, reading the comprehensive plan and I'll read it one more time. Again, it's looking at the things you'd like to see happen, how it ties to the comprehensive plan and anything we do on the living. City initiative, livable city initiative will be tied to comprehensive plan goal and objectives, a little sort of operational. Make that comprehensive plan more operational with you. And I know they're all in there because as soon as I would start thinking of them, I could find them all. But this is just another way to sort of pull out the top fifteen, top twenty. And say, here you go, mayor, you know, and maybe they'll get there in time for the budget, maybe they won't. That's not the critical thing. The critical thing is to get them out there as things and through city chat is a great idea to get them out of the problem.
Are you on board with this, you said, in the con plan?
No.
There may be some of those.
There may be, absolutely. There's lots of stuff on it.
You know, when we were doing the con plan, we talked extensively about um. The downtown corridor and what we would like to see.
That will be one of the areas, definitely.
Yes, I I would like that to come to the forefront because how our city is viewed when people first come into town. First impressions are everything.
If at the city council meeting last night, that was actually brought up. Somebody said, maybe we need to, the city needs to cough up grants for some of these. Business owners that can't afford to do an upgrade to the side. Who knows? Always help them find other things under some of the programs that are out there, but I definitely want that to be one of the areas. Because I have my own buggerboos at that. We all have our own issues, you know, get the construction crew over now, make it look prettier. All that sort of stuff needs to go into making the downs, the the downtown corridor and then defining the downtown corridor. I mean, how far does it go?
So so on that idea, uh, we have talked a lot about uh, uh, pyramid zoning. In the in the commercial zones and as it is now, if you look at, if you read the descriptions for B one and B two. Uh, out, the only, the only major difference between B one and B two is that B two is intended for more outdoorsy types of. Activities, uh, and other than that, they both have taverns, they both have cocktail lounges, they both have hotels and. You know, and 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 drugstores and banks, uh, and you know, and. If we're going to tackle that, do we want to? Narrow the scope of of permitted uses, uh. So that there's a bigger distinction between B one and B two. And I'm not suggesting, I'm only asking the question, is that something we want to think about?
I think as we talk the business district, that is one of the topics that'll come up. For consideration for us to make a recommendation. As we talk about the business director, business district part of livable city. That is something we definitely can discuss as a group and take a vote and make a decision on. On a recommendation. But I mean, I, right, you know, right now, I I I think I'm gonna throw affordable housing in, there's not much we can do. I'm definitely gonna put downtown business district, I'm gonna put walking, I'm gonna put biking. And then I've got to go through with this. Some other things to the comprehensive plan. If you have anything, they just send me an email. You're the most familiar with the con plan. Um, and I'll go through it one more time to kind of pull things out. I mean, the other thing. That I hear from just because of where I live and from other people is the um. The inter-dune trail is a combined firefighting trail, you know, sort of the trail that's. Just west of the Waxmerlin. So we just improved that one bulldozer blade wide for hiking, mountain biking and use it as a fire. So firefighting activity. And I know all the issues associated with that. But that's something that you could definitely bring up as a benefit because there are people walking the dunes all the time. I'm one of them. And there's also a fire issue. Right now, the Humvees were all over the dunes right before the port crashing around out there and they almost got stopped. The council, um, so there's, there's lots of things we could put in there as recommendations. And then sort of how far we flush them out, we can work out. But at some point, we bring it to a level of clarity that it can get turned over to city staff or turned over to the mayor. And the mayor accounts aside, they weren't putting it over the city staff to take on. And some of these are on the budget priorities already, so. Oh, the fourth thing in livable cities is a sense of community and um. It, this actually goes all the way back to the food truck initiative and uh, um. One of the, one of the council members talking about, she'd love to have once a month, Thursday evening, music and food trucks. Well. Convention. So if this is something we want to recommend as a livable city sense of community, the board can say that the government, that the city should look at. Low cost funding, music and encouraging food trucks to come second Tuesday of the month to the convention. Those are the sort of things that go into livable cities.
I think that could flush out. Just how viable food trucks are in this community because I suspect. If it's a a one day only. It would be mainly uh supplied by local restaurants. Because I don't think somebody's gonna drive from Olympia for a three or four hour food truck sale.
Yeah, but I mean, that's just one of the things I talked about. Since I, I'd love to see a monthly Tuesday, Thursday evening. Event with music and. The ability to have food vendors and as we know, the only place you could legally do that on city property in accordance with Ray Harbor is the convention center right now. So I mean, and every time I drive by, I see that bandstand. That tent down not being used, it's a wonderful opportunity that we could recommend to the mayor. So that'll sort of be the fourth thing, you know, sense of community, community activities.
It's quite simple to close off that particular street, too.
Yeah, there's lots of things you could do.
And there's plenty of hawking in that, so it's not gonna hurt the business.
They're gonna close it off a hot while and tear it up. They do every year, so. So um, basically all I'm asking is bring your specific or general initiatives. I will send everybody sort of the three to five categories we're gonna kind of try to work in. And I'm gonna go back through one more time the comprehensive plan and um. Sort of tie everything to a goal or objective with the comprehensive. Anything further on sort of what I talked to the mayor briefly about the livable cities?
Couldn't see if there's anything that. I I think you have covered a lot of ground and you're trying to.
Yeah, and I have a habit of talking fast, so I'll do that. So um, any, I'm gonna go through reports. Dan, any thing to report?
No, I'm I'm gonna try and get. Maybe something by, by next week. I won't present any things, but probably the following one.
Perfect.
I gotta get to Richard first and I I've had some issues I had to deal with, so I haven't worked on it for long.
Paul, anything to report?
No.
Um. Our report that I was at the city council meeting last night and I was the second or third to last on the agenda and they, we did go through transit lodging. One more time and I think we agreed it's ready for an agenda bill, right? So I think we agreed that transit lodging is ready for.
So they're taking it as a discussion to the next meeting?
What? I thought we were gonna do.
Did you do the discussion for the sixth time?
I'm pretty sure.
No, I think, we'll check. I think we said. We that we kicked it over to you to write the code.
That it was going to the lawyer, yeah.
Going to the lawyer. Mayor said it's going to the lawyer. They just gotta work out. The only thing that came up was when we said each transit lodging invitation needed a business licensing. Um, a couple of the members were.
Oh, train, sorry.
Transit.
I heard food trucks.
No, not yet. Transit lodges go to.
That one's going.
So the only reports, there was a valid discussion about somewhere like Smugglers Cove or whatever that's called that has six units right next to each other. Should they get six business licenses? So we'll let the code writers figure out how to give them the ability to get one license for six contiguous small units. But that's your only, everything else, they were very accurate, right? I thought. I also, very last thing is, is as you're kind of close to meetings is. Um, the mayor was directed to tell us to bring food trucks to him, which I will do tomorrow. It's a very simple, one page thing. So that'll go to the mayor tomorrow or the next day. Um, that's the only report I have. Eleanor?
No.
Richard?
I was in the city council also.
Um, do we have a motion to excuse Brian?
I don't buy the, by the handbook, we can't excuse him. We have to get the excuse asked.
Okay, that's fine. Then there is no excuse.
He didn't inform anybody.
He didn't, didn't inform me, didn't inform anyone. So, okay, I tried to call him, I tried to advance all the ways. Okay. That's it. So. Before we go, I really screwed commissioner Will by making them do back to back, but that's okay. Um. Does anybody know if Pat will be here next meeting?
He didn't, what I heard him say on Friday is is he reminded that he was not gonna be here today. Uh, so I put him expecting to be here in a few.
I will send him an email to confirm that he is the secretary for the next meeting. And if he's not, it will be you thought and I'll send you an email.
Didn't begin Friday or?
No, this is, this is the, the, uh, the ninth of August. Okay. Okay.
And I I missed something when I, when it was my turn.
I'm at the twenty, I'm sorry, the twenty-sixth. Twenty-sixth of July.
What's the date of the next meeting?
The date of the next meeting is July twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, at this location.
So I missed something when it was my turn at that. And what I missed is is I was looking at the minutes template. And my copy of it, I still was listing Oyah Bay as the meeting place. So I I updated that. It's, you know, to Gary, if you want a copy of it, contact Gary. Gary can email you out. We updated.
Yeah, I'll send that out.
I've got that. We still have the hearing on Friday, right?
No, we don't have a hearing for it. We don't. That was last Friday.
Well, that's on our public hearing at the city council, right?
No, I have, I have conditional use hearings on Friday.
Here, we don't have to be here, not really.
Yeah, if you want, go, vote for the public, it's all pretty popular. That's it.
Any other business? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
The move.
Stephen.
We are in adjournment.